All right, we're going to get started.
That's me.
Let's iron out the echoes.
That's me, sorry.
Okay, I'd like to start by recognizing that we are on the unceded territories of the Kowatson, Malahat, Subasit, Halalt, Peneliket, Staminus, Liahson, Paukuchin, Dididat, and Pachidat Nations, whose people have walked here for thousands of years and stewarded these lands, and I'm very grateful for that. Welcome to our regular board meeting of Wednesday, July 9th. My name is Kate Segal. I'm the area director for Electoral Area A, Mel Bay, Malahat, and I'm the Chair of the Board. I'll be chairing this meeting. Mr. Robbins, we will start with some changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Just a couple of clarifications for you as well. Under Committee Commission Reports CR4, under R7, that is a vote for all of the Board, yet it lists in your agenda that it's for Electoral Area Directors only. With respect to R8 and R9, the bylaws that are being recommended for consideration have an effective date of July 1st. Well, as we know, it is July 9th, and so the effective date will simply be the date that should this Board adopt them, that's when the date will come into effect. And so when they're brought forward for their readings, that's when you will see that change in those bylaws. So just wanted to make sure that you're aware about the force and effect of those bylaws. There is no CR5. There was no recommendations from Committee this morning. And finally, Committee has asked this body in its closed session to undertake an item, which was CSSR2, within the closed, to move into the, this body's closed session. And with that, we need an addition under Section 20 of your agenda, why you would go into closed session. And I'd ask that for that particular item, that you also go in a closed session with respect to negotiations between the municipality and provincial government, or federal government, or both, and a third party, and that's Section 90, subsection 2, subsection B. I'll remind you of those when you make those such motions, when we get to the end of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Do have a motion to approve as amended, moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director McClinton. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we'll be looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular board meeting of June 25th. Moved by Director McClinton, seconded by Director Nicholson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And we come to public input. If there's anyone in the gallery that would like to provide public input, I would like to invite you. We appreciate the input that comes from our community, is very valued and appreciated, and we just request that this input is presented in a friendly, respectful manner. So if there's any members of the public here, or Mr. Robbins in the gallery, online?
Don't see anybody up there.
Okay. Great. Moving on to Committee Commission Reports, we start with CR1, the Report and Recommendations of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of June 25th. I'd like to first welcome up Ms. Bowen from Finance, just to provide some very important information for us to consider in this decision. Welcome, Ms. Bowen. Thank you for having a little presentation. You're going to put it up on the screen?
Yes, I just got to do that.
That's great. I'll give you a moment.
Oh, that's not what... I don't really want to share the notes. Nope, don't want to do that.
F5.
F5, okay. That's not working. There we go. Let's see, start. There we go. That's better. There. So, yeah, so we're coming today just to go over the mandate that was brought forward at the Committee of the Whole back on June 25th, to just give a little bit of a background. So we're just going to talk about, first, you approved the calendars, you've approved, like, the separate meetings for the budget discussions, and proposed the communication plan that's going to be happening with regards to the 2026 budget. Under this, the mandate of the 2.5%, there is going to be few that would be able to meet that. There'll be a lot of functions that are currently at a very tight budget as it is, to define cuts within those budgets to make the 2.5% mandate would be very hard. So we're talking mainly about the water sewers and drainage. A lot of those small ones are already trying to scramble to make ends meet with regards in their budgets. The CVRD is not, also has all the same inflationary pressures that everybody else has with regards to short-term debt. We have the hydro fortis. We have union contracts on the go right now. There's two negotiations happening with QP, and those will all be coming into play within the 2026 budget. There's also stuff to do with software and liability and property insurance, which is like anywhere between the 10% to 14% increase and percentages during this budget. There's going to also, there's also current contracts that we would have to open up a look at, because one is transit. We are already in a contract with them. There's contracts with the Vancouver Island Library, which we're already in with, and there's no changes that can happen with those. And there's also with the solid waste hauling to the states, and then we're at the mercy of whatever the dollar is when we buy, due to being a local government. There were some changes that happened with regards to strategic initiatives with the 2025 budget, which was, we're still in the middle of the evaluation with the economic development, so we don't know what's coming out of that with the consultant. There's a review of the environmental division. There's also going to be a review of contribution agreements that we're currently in that could affect the budget. There's the Transit Division now that's been kind of pulled away from the facilities, so there's some changes that have to happen there that will affect this year's budget. And then there's also the Indigenous Relations Framework that we're working on, currently funded by a grant fund, but that is running out, so if we want to continue that work, that is going to have to be a requisition increase to keep that work going. So, an example of the impact of the 2.5%. So of the percentage of the requisition from last year, 70% of it is regional services. Of that 70%, 53% belongs to regional recreation. So if you were to do a 2.5% just on the regional services, that's only a $1.1 million increase, and now you have to find, figure that out between all of those services plus those nine rec facilities, on who gets what and what needs to be diminished on that. So that's a huge pack. Capital, we're recommending that this year we would only bring stuff that's emergencies, that needs to be repaired, or impacts a level of service. We would bring those kind of stuff to the Board, that would go through the senior leadership team prior to coming to you guys, but it would just be those kind of things that we would be looking at. We would not be looking at new capital at this time. So having said all that, I know it was a lot of throwing at you all at once. Staff is recommending that we do 4% to have staff go and build their budgets, bring everything together. Senior leadership team will evaluate all those budgets and bring back options for you guys at the November 6th meeting of how to bring it down to the 2.5%. And those would be options of service cuts or levels of service and programs and that. So we would build right now, but then we would bring you back options of how to bring it back down.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to turn to the Chair of the Committee, just to start with Director Douglas.
Sorry to comment on the staff recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, we have a recommendation from the Committee, and then some information from staff, and an alternative suggestion, sounds like a compromise. As the Chair of the Committee, I'd like to give you first open floor.
Sure, yeah. I think it's a reasonable compromise. I think some of us, when we supported the motion at the previous Committee of the Whole Meeting, wanted 2.5% as kind of that floor, and then we were willing to consider enhancements above that, when we got a better sense of what the implications might be on service levels. But I think what staff had proposed here could get us in the same spot. We're going to start off with, if we do go with the staff recommendation, start off with the 4% as the baseline, and then we can, once we have a better sense of what the implications are of further reducing it, we can decide to go with the 2.5% or stick with 4 or something, something in between. So I think we could wind up in the same spot in the end. We're going to do so in an informed way. I think my concern now, especially coming out of that last meeting, was for, I think all of us around this table, we hear from our residents, the top concern right now was the increased cost of living, whether it's housing costs, or interest rates, or grocery bills, and obviously, we're not going to be able to solve that at this Board, but I think we all want to do what we can to ensure that we're not increasing that burden more than we have to. But at the same time, we've got to be mindful of the impacts that service level cuts could have on members of our community, and I think particularly the regional recreational facilities. If you take, say, the Couch and Aquatic Center, which is obviously of significant importance right across the region, I'd hate to be in a position where we're, you know, say, having to reduce swim classes, and we know we've already got a huge waitlist for swim classes at Couch and Aquatic Center, and should be really looking at ways to expand that rather than reduce it. And I'm sure if you look at each one of the recreational facilities, you can find examples of programs in similar positions. So, yeah, I'm happy to move the staff recommendation, and I think we're going to have lots of opportunities to debate that between now and the fall, and likely into early 2026 as well.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded by Director Nicholson.
We can process?
Yeah.
Just curious, because...
Sorry, push your microphone.
Okay.
Just some clarity around the process here.
Yeah.
Because we have a motion from a Committee, and that is a motion, and I haven't run across, I think I've run across trying to do this before, and not being permitted to put another motion on the floor while there's still a motion from Committee. So is this new business? Is this the right place to do it? Maybe help me out with the process.
Yeah, so I had the same question of our corporate officer before we started the meeting, so maybe I'll pass that to Mr. Robbins, just to give us your advice.
Thank you. If we've been inconsistent, Director Martin, apologies, but these are simply recommendations that come out of Committee, and it's up to this Board whether to advance them or not, to propose amendments to it, not consider it, or to propose other recommendations. Given the, I think the importance of your budget, certainly staff felt it important to bring items to light, and so there's nothing precluding you from then advancing this particular recommendation or anything else that's before you.
So you're saying our process is fine?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay?
And so clarity, so the recommendation that comes from Committee, it just stays, like, what happens to that on the books? Like, it just stays there, and if someone went back and looked at it, would they say, "Oh, I just got missed," or "It didn't get discussed," or "It didn't get folded down"?
Chair, it's simply a recommendation. So it wouldn't be missed. It's on your agenda today. And so then, from today's meeting, you'll have minutes, and they will refer to this item, CR1, and the motion that may come out of this body might be different than what was recommended. And so you still will see the discussion and debate if you, as you've moved through those processes.
Okay, so I'm wondering if we want to get this written and up on your little screen, Mr. Robbins? So what I heard, and Director Douglas, correct me if I'm wrong, but that the staff recommendation was for a mandate of 4% on requisition, and for staff to bring options for a reduction to a further 2.5%.
And options, sorry?
Options for further reduction to 2.5%. We'll just wait and get it up on the screen, so we can all read it.
Sure.
Yep. So I do have a speaker's list. Director Abbott. Oh, is that what Tracy said, November 4? Is that important, Tracy, to put in?
It's November 6.
November 6?
Yeah, it's a special board.
Bring forward the options at the November 6th. Committee of the Whole?
I don't believe it's a special committee.
Special budget meeting?
Yeah.
I just really appreciate that we have this opportunity to be able to put our resolutions up on the screen, because I definitely experience times where we all kind of end up on a different page about what was said. Well, we're all human, and we forget, make mistakes. So that's the 2026 budget mandate be a maximum of 4% on requisition, and staff provide options for further reductions to 2.5%. And two, that staff bring back those options for further reductions to the special November 6th meeting. So moved by Director Douglas, seconded by Director Nicholson. I'm going to start with Director Wilson.
I nearly lost track of what I was going to say there, but anyway, there's a couple of words that come, and phrases which come out of this particular thing. The first one is compromise, and the second one is placing inflationary pressures. Of course we are, but so is every other family, every other individual in this area. And as Director Douglas said, that's something we can't solve, but we can certainly do everything we can to reduce that burden, and that's what I'm looking for here. The number that comes to mind right now is 187, I think that's the number, 187 functions within the CVRD. There has to be room to reduce there, or to compromise there as well, because as far as I can make out with every meeting that I've gone to, we have the highest number of functions of any regional district in BC. There's room there, I'm sure. So Tracy, question for you. Is 4% the absolute floor limit that we're looking at here? Where did the 4% come from?
Through the Chair to Director Wilson. This is basing it on wages that are going to be occurring this year, and we're in a couple, like, the municipality in North Couch, and as well as CVRD are entering into negotiations with the QP agreement.
Okay.
Right now, so it, we don't know what's going to happen with that, so we're just basing on the floor, giving us a kind of a bit of a wiggle room.
Yeah.
To allow for...
So that's basically just what we have to do with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And the rest of it is open to compromise, right?
So they're, yeah, and that's why we would build the budgets on what we need, and then bring those budgets back to you guys to see where you would like, because, like you say, yes, we do have a lot of functions, but a lot of them are water sewer drainage. Those are ones that are, have tight budgets. There's ones that are strictly just user fees for some of those budgets, so not all of them are requisitions, so, yeah.
Good. And Chair, just to follow up there, this looks reasonable to me, that bring back what you absolutely need, and then we take it back to 2.5 where we can kind of thing. And this is the way that every family has to work here. What do we got? What can we afford what we can't afford? And there are lots of nice-to-haves. I've got a list of nice-to-haves. I can't have it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Miles Wilson.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, there was a comment made about the number of services, so I think it may be the Director was referring to per capita. Our number of services is quite high proportionally across the province. There are regional districts with other, more services than we have, but it's also sometimes challenging to compare regional district to regional district, because there's some local and subregional circumstances that are unique, and what types of service should be provided. But it is a good point, in that we should consider that as well, when we're looking at the level of service that we have.
Thank you. Director Douglas, I have you next, but are you okay if I wait? Yeah. Director Morrison?
Thank you, Chair. This resolution is very supportable. It, I believe, matches the intent, at least the 2.5 number of the Director that made it at Committee. I think staff's response is more than appropriate, given the intimate knowledge of all of those things that were mentioned. So I can support this, especially since the mention of the 4% on requisition. That brings specificity to the work that the staff have to do. The one question that I have is the comment by staff that the only items that will be brought forward will be items of an emergent nature. So I have complete faith in staff. If there are strategic plan initiatives, if there's developments that come forward, if there's initiatives that come forward that are deemed priorities, but maybe not emergent and don't affect requisition, I want to know that staff are still going to be putting those forward with other funding sources, grants, the likes, and that we can do some business as usual, and I'll be very pragmatic and say that this is, we're in the fourth year of the term, there's an election next year, there have been items that people have been working on through the course of this term, and I wouldn't want to see them sidelined for, because there's something of an emergent nature. If it's going to affect requisition, fair enough, but if there's other funding sources, I don't want capital projects or special initiatives to be sidelined if they can be funded in other ways. So is that sort of the intent?
Through the Chair to Director Morrison. Yes, that would be the intent, because you would have, I know there's lots of departments that are working on grant funding right now, that are going to be, have some major impacts on us, and there's also the growing communities funds that is coming out, that would be, a lot of projects could be 100% funded with those, so those, we would be looking at all those through the senior leadership team.
Thank you.
Sorry, Vice Chair McGonigal, I got confused. You were next, and I skipped over you. Now it's your turn.
There are no apologies necessary, Ms. Chair. I can support this too, as I was the seconder of the original motion, but I thought it lacked in a Board Directive on how we could attain that. In my view, it seemed a little bit vague. When we look at other entities for increases, they're residing around what the proposal was at the beginning, but the specificity of requisition increases was not included in that original motion. We must be cognizant that these decisions may impact our strategic plan, and I think it's important that that be brought back to us, on the ones that reside in the parking lot, for instance, which have been put there for certain reasons, that may not be put forward in this term because of the financial implications. We have no control over some entities that we reside in, Vancouver Island Regional Library Board, et cetera. So I can certainly support the intent of this, and then looking at the work being done on how to get it to the original 2.5% target, will show us the impacts of that through the reports that staff bring back to us, and then we can make that decision on how we want to move forward. Regardless if it's the fourth year or the first year of the term, I think it's important that we understand the complexities of the tax system on our constituents, the archaic matter in which we receive our funds. It is antiquated and far beyond need of refurbishment. So if this isn't a wake-up call on how we move forward, on how we get sustainable funding to move our Directive forward, I don't know what is. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Director Abbott?
Thank you, Chair. I too would like to commend staff for this alternative to last week's proposal, and I think to help staff, perhaps, Area Directors can do their part by looking at our own discretionary funds, like grants and aid, our park projects, and we too should try to cut back and see how easy a task it is that we're asking of staff. We're just growing, and I think, I worry when I hear staff say things like, "We're going to defer capital maintenance further." Capital maintenance is critical to keep our assets in good order, and unfortunately, the cost of everything is going up. So my point would be, if we can lend a hand, I know it's small dollars relative to what Ms. Bowen has to reconcile, but I think if we can show an emphasis in reducing some of our grants and aid to 2.5% growth max, if not holding them steady, and again, look at our own park initiatives in our areas that perhaps our parks, which we know take up about, the overall parks budget takes up about a third of the expenses of this organization. So those are areas that we can perhaps lend a hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Martman?
Thanks, Chair, and I'm just mauling this in my head, because I think I can understand other Directors' support. I'm not sure where I actually stand right now. I have a couple of questions first. So when it says 4% on requisition, you sometimes talk about core and enhancement. So are you lumping both of those into that 4%?
Through the Chair to Director Martman. No, this is just going to be on the core. This is just to keep service levels. That's why we were saying that we would not be bringing enhancements or capital unless it's an emergent, or like, will affect a service level.
So should it say core? Or, I am just, because I guess what sometimes, the importance of this statement, I don't think can be underestimated, because it's literally repeated throughout the budget process. The Board gave this mandate at this time, and so what you're saying is there are no enhancements then? Because I think the last, the last motion spoke to both core and enhancements, and so...
So through the Chair to Director Martman, this is just on core. Like, we, when we've always brought it through, we've always brought it on core first and let you know what the enhancements were on top, and then there's always been the two. And that's what this would be. This is just core to bring it forward, and then if there are any emergent capital or that that needs to be done, it would be bringing it out on the 6th of November to let you know of those ones as well, and what the percentage would affect it. Those would be decisions on whether you want to go forward with those, or what other options that we will be providing on November 6th, what you want to go with.
And then the second question I had is that last year, it was 3.5% was the mandate from the Board.
25.
Sorry? Yeah, oh, sorry, okay. So I'm wondering, why not 3.5 rather than 4?
Due to increased costs of other stuff that's going to bring us above the 3.5.
I thought the pressures were greater.
Oh, they're very, yeah, so like, we're looking 10, 15, like, but I, that's, not everybody will... So like, we're looking 10, 15, like, but I, that's, not everybody will be affected by a 15% increase in their, in software because it will only affect certain ones. So it's like, it's hard with a regional district because if you're looking at an overall, so the two and a half percent overall last year would have only been like 1.6 million, which, how do you split that along the 100 and close to 200 functions? How do you split that across the board? And this is what we're, like the 4%, you have to look at each one separately to see what it is. Some of them won't be 4%, some of them will be under because they won't have wages or something to it. But some of them may be over that because of like transit with regards to a contract with the library because we're in a contract, animal control, we're in a contract. There's ones that are already set that we have to be paying that's going to be all over. So it's, we kind of met in the middle, like 4% kind of would be a good one to go across with all of them.
I, I think as another director stated that, you know, this will get us to the place where we have to make the tough decisions and it, and it's up to us to, if we're going to get to 2.5, that that's going to be the, the discussions around the board that, you know, this is what it actually means. So I, I can support it. It's just, yeah, I, I like the original one first, but I, I think this is probably practical to get there.
Thank you. Director McClinton.
Thanks, Chair. I don't know if I'm ready to talk. I think I can probably reluctantly support this. I have significant concerns though, and just speaking to, following up from what Director Martman said in, in 2003, we came with the budget, I think it was 3.6 is where you guys landed, and then we went through our enhancements and we ended up at, I forget what it was. It was closer to, you know, seven or eight percent. I can't remember off the top of my head. And, you know, that, my original motion was to help guard against that where staff would be making those, those difficult decisions around enhancements. Because as, when managers come up and speak about them, they make a compelling case and it's, it's pretty tough to look your colleagues in the face and tell them no. So can you maybe just elaborate on the types of enhancements that we might see, the amount? You know, you, I, I think the words were the emergency, yeah.
So through the chair to Director Mart, or Director, no, Director Martman, sorry, Director McClinton. We, I haven't really talked to staff on what they're bringing forward yet because a lot of them are just trying to figure out what is going to be the situation for this year. Do they bring any capital forward at all? Or do they bring any enhancements forwards? They may not, knowing what they have to do with the budgets, they may not bring anything forward. There may be very minimal amounts of stuff. But as Director Morrison said, there might be some that come through that are grant-funded 100% that might come through. Again, that would be discussed, that'd be discussed at this board, and you guys would make those decisions whether to bring them forward or not. Senior leadership team will be making a very deep dive into all the stuff this year and only bringing forward what really needs to be. Emergence would be like if we have a truck in the, like a garbage truck and the trucks, the doors are falling or something like that, that needs to be replaced or fixed, that will be bringing forward because it's, that becomes a safety feature for the staff, and then it will also affect service. Those were types of things that we would be bringing forward, but it's, we would be bringing those to here first, to before they actually go into the budget and asking if that's what you want to include to have it. So on November 6th, we will have your core and then any other things that might be. And then at that time before, because if we were to do a lot of cuts on, then, then you change it back, it's harder for staff. It's a lot of work just to do the budget as it is. So as we get to build the budget now, and then we get everything together, and we'll kind of have two separate, we have a core, this is what we're aiming for, and then in the enhancements, we bring it to you, and then you guys can make the decision, do you really want to go forward with those? Then we can start billing another budget that we would bring in January for you guys to do your final sale.
Follow up if I can. So there's a hypothetical world where you come with reductions, the board doesn't go with them, and there's enhancements, and we land somewhere at 7%, 8%.
Through the chair to Director McClinton, that can happen.
And I'll just, that would be the will of the board.
Yes, correct.
I understand. Thank you. I'm just going to finish with a couple of points. Again, it's been said, we have some of the most services of any regional district. We're currently sitting at a inflation rate of 1.7% last I checked. We increased our budget by over $10 million last year. And my area in the last, over the last three years has seen their tax, the requisitions increased by more than 50%. I want to support this, but I'm really, this, as I sit here and think about this, this, this really goes, shakes off sort of all of the, the intent of the original motion. It's just, I'm, I still don't know how I'm going to vote. I'll just leave it there.
Thank you. Director Duncan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support this compromise budget based on the fact that you've provided information that so many of the services and contracts are already above two and a half percent. It would be foolish to start to try to cut all of those back. So that's why I support it. And then, and right now inflation may be 1.7, but I doubt it's going to be 1.7 next
Director Manhouse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm reluctantly, I'm not sure which way I'm going to vote on this. We had quite a, a discussion on this at the last committee of the whole meeting, and, and there were some, there were some great ideas from all, from both sides, and, and we settled at two and a half percent maximum. I'm in the same board. If we, if we go to 4%, it's going to go 7, 8, 9%. Like even last, 2024, it was a 3.5% mandate and ended up with an 8 or 9% increase. That's my worry, same as with Director McClinton. You know, our, you know, you know, when you're in the rental business, your taxes are going up 8, 9%, but the provincially mandated, which you can increase your taxes, sorry, your rents by, are 3%, just over 3%. I just can't, I'm not sure which way I'm going to vote on this. Thanks.
Ms. Miles Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. So I, I just wanted to reiterate that we will come back with the options for you to accomplish a two and a half percent. So that's going to take a deep dive by the senior leadership team. And as the director across the way has already pointed out, it will relate to some hard choices that are going to have to get made on which services you would like to alter or reduce from their current level of service. But we're committed to bring back some options for you. It has been challenging in years past to decide, for, for this body to kind of decide which services to adjust because some appeal to half and some appeal to the other half. And so we will, we will do our best to give you as many options as we can and make it as informative as possible for, for the November special meeting, as mentioned. But the intent is definitely to show you how you can accomplish that two and a half.
Thank you. I'm going to go online, Director Acton. Sorry, I didn't, I don't know if you've been waiting for quite a while.
No, I haven't actually. Thank you, Chair. I've put my hand up and down a couple of times just because I'm not sure how to weigh in on this. And I'm sure that zero-based budgeting has been discussed. Unfortunately, I missed this last debate, and I too am struggling with it because I, oh, I don't even know, that maybe this is like my eighth budget, and every single one has been different. And then what, these mandates, I'm glad that Director Martman brought up some of it because these mandates do tend to mean one thing in, in, in my mind, and then it's, it's a bit of a, a struggle moving forward. So I guess, I'm really, I, I, I know that we want to not increase the taxes too much, but because we're such a large board, it really is challenging, like Director, what Ms. Miles Wilson stated, with people, you know, may, may be in favor and then others not. So I, I think having a really strong directive here is actually more important than something that is flexible. So personally, I would like to see this to be, you know, a, a hard number so that in the end, you know, we're getting to that number because we have never been able to
Thank you. Okay, we're on to round two. Sorry, Ms. Bowen, you wanted to say something.
So just going back to Director Martman's talking about like the three and a half in 2024 and not meeting yet, out of that percentage for that year, a large percentage of that was regional rec. And that's what's caused ours to go up. The last couple of years has always been regional rec. Of the last couple of years, it's always between the four and six percent on top, of that percentage is due to taking on from the municipalities now as part of the regional rec and adding that to our requisition. So that's where the big percentages were coming from.
Good time. The other factor that we had discussed in the past couple of days is just, you know, we're, we're talking about implications. And so to accomplish a two and a half, if it were to apply to the regional recreation service, the difference between last couple of years and today is that we now have nine recreation facilities within the regional recreation program, and they're capital projects, and their need to establish reserves is also within our financial purview. And so I believe Tracy has, if we, a two and a half were to apply to the regional recreation service, I believe you have a number for the amount, maximum amount of capital that would apply over nine facilities, just for context, so you can put it into perspective.
So if it was for the nine rec facilities and regional rec, you're only looking at 495,000 for nine regional recreation centers to increase their requisition by.
Okay, round two. Director Douglas.
I'm just suggesting. Traditionally, or at least over the last couple of years, the regional recreation commissions have had an opportunity to recommend various capital projects to the, to the committee of the whole and to the board for consideration. Is that process going to continue for, is the plan for that process continue for this year as well?
Through the chair to Director Douglas, yes, that is still the process. So even though the commission, it will still come to you to, to the board to decide whether they're still going through with it or not.
So those could be then beyond the 4%?
They all have to match the 4% as well. Their, their core needs to match the four, and then any of their, a stuff would be on top, would be the same idea. It would be brought to you guys to know whether that's going to be the same as what would happen with the CVRD stuff. The ones, the other regional recs would also be in the same, have to follow the same mandate.
Yes, I'm, I don't think I'm totally clear. So, but you've mentioned the emergent capital projects, the ones that affect service delivery. So those would be beyond the 4%. But the regional commissions could recommend those to the board, could they not?
True, yes. They can recommend them to the board, and then you guys can, whether they say yes or no.
Got it, thank you.
It still comes to the board as the final decision before it goes into the five-year plan.
All right, thanks.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. I'm being swayed backwards and forwards here. I appreciate the intent of this. You know, it, it is perhaps a way forward, but one of the things that the CAO mentioned here was hard choices. And that's what this board, I'm prepared to make hard choices. Every single one of us, I'm sure, here is prepared to make hard choices as far as their personal finances are concerned. Why are we not prepared, even with the size of our board, to make the same hard choices that affect those outside of our family circle? Because that's what we're being asked to do. The same choices as we would make for our own personal stuff, we should be making for our, the people that we represent out there. And if that means hard choices, so, so be it. I'm prepared to make those hard choices. Now, one of the things that, again, that was mentioned was that the previous rises were due to regional recreation. Yeah, they were. They're gone now. What's replaced it? $356 a year for three stream, um, refuge, collection. So there's been no change at all. One has just replaced the other. Hard choices. What we do in our own personal lives should reflect what we do for those people who voted us in. Thank you.
So I think we're all on the same page that we're interested in making hard choices. And I've heard from many people at this table that they're interested in this compromise, and they're really keen to see the options to keep us at a two and a half percent, which is the original intention from the committee two weeks ago. What I think the comments from our CAO were about is that we're often on different pages. We've heard, you know, there are some directors that are interested in cutting, you know, arena facilities, some that are interested in cutting parks facilities, some, you know, but getting us all on the same page is what is very hard. So compromise is another word that I've heard a lot today in this discussion. So I think that's what we need to remember as we go forward. If we move forward with this resolution, when we see these options, is trying to figure out where we can actually all compromise together. So we'll have to see how that goes in the future. Thank you, Director Wilson. Director Morrison.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm, I'm struggling in that I think we're doing the committee of the whole debate again. This, a lot of what I've heard just recently is great debate when the report's in front of us. It's all about hard choices. This is direction to staff to give us information to make intelligent, informed decisions. So with that, I would ask the question be called.
Ah, so I feel like I've read my Robert's rules on this one. When someone calls, that debate has to end, and I call the question, correct? Mr. Parliamentarian?
First of all, the question.
Oh.
Yep.
So first I have to take a vote on the call the question request?
Scan the room, see who's left.
Okay. We have, I have two speakers left, and is this a debatable? Sorry, we've got a procedural, no, we don't believe it is. So I'll call the question on voting for.
Should the question be called?
Should the question be called? Thank you very much. Should the question be called? All in favor? Four, five, six, seven. I think that fails. Oh, sorry.
Online?
We need two thirds, exactly. Was, did anyone vote in favor online? Sorry, I wasn't looking. Okay, thank you, Sierra. Opposed? Okay. Sorry, I need to think of, no, I already voted opposed, one, two, three.
It fails.
It fails. Okay, so we're back to the speakers list, right? Director Morrison, are you complete? Do you have any follow-up?
Nope.
Okay. Two more speakers maybe. Director McClinton and then Director Martman.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And yeah, I know we're supposed to be debating, but we didn't get to ask those questions before the motion was moved, so I appreciate the extra time. The, the comment about regional rec was made, it was 460,000. Can you speak to maybe what the existing budget is for regional rec?
Through the chair to Director McClinton. So you're talking about what the requisition was last year?
Yeah, their total.
So I, I was just basing it on requisition. That was just on requisition. Last year was 23,800 and something.
Was allocated towards regional rec?
Was towards regional rec, which is, makes up 53% of your regional services.
Right. Thank you. And one more question. And I'm, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, but I don't, my suspicion is it won't be that hard. Can you point to two or three service, core service cuts we've made in the last, since in the last term? I, I'd be happy to hear from anybody.
Yeah, because I.
Ms. Miles Wilson.
We've, we've actually removed a whole department from the organization. So we've streamlined and consolidated our management structure and integrated all of those services into other departments as a major initiative.
Yeah, just to note, I remember it was, oh, we cut from the budget last year over $1 million.
One more follow-up. I mean, from the proposed increase, we removed $1 million, but we increased the budget by $10 million. Was there any other cuts that we've made in this term besides that cut?
So, you know, cuts are directed by the, or service reductions are directed by this board, but I would say we've found a number of efficiencies. So you'll recall that we did an organizational efficiency review. All of, all of those recommendations have been implemented to certain degrees to find efficiencies in our staffing and continue on implementing strategic
and continue on implementing strategic initiatives by finding those efficiencies. So I can share that report out if you'd like to kind of refresh your memory on that. I don't go over all of, all of the elements of it here, but I can say that a significant amount of work has gone into kind of reorganizing the divisions for greater efficiencies.
Just final comment, if I can. I, I will reluctantly support this, this resolution. I, I asked that question just to highlight, I knew the answer to it. And just to highlight the point that we've been virtually unable to find reductions. There's, you know, I shouldn't say virtually, but it's, it's been very difficult for us. So I just hope that there's an easy path for those of us that would like to support it. It may not get supported, but there's an easy path to 2.5%. So that's what I would really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Martman, maybe to close.
I'm just looking at, yeah, you know, I think for me, the issue comes down to, are we really doing a cut? Or are we really sort of just working around the edges of a budget process? And I think we're working around the edges of a budget process and not really enhancing or embracing a cut at this point. We may embrace a cut in the fall. And that's, the may concerns me. Because it's, every, you know, we go, all of us have been through this a number of times. And we know it's compelling arguments and something is near and dear to us. And so getting that, to that may do it, is going to be very difficult. And I don't know how I will deal with it. Because really what you, what this, if you, if you go to the heart of this, you would say, I'm willing to do those cuts now, I'm willing to do those cuts in the fall. And that's the piece where I don't, you know, I just don't know how I would even react. So I, but I do know right now that you can make that cut and don't let the process drive you. So it's, it's really a conundrum. The problem I, I foresee with making the cut right now is that it gives you no flexibility in case you go like, wow, this is really gonna hurt. And so that's my problem with it. And so, you know, I, I just don't know how I'm gonna vote. You know, it's one of those things where I think it's so important to make a stand for something. And I would rather have the wording be a way where you can almost reverse it. Where you say, we want a 2.5% mandate, but we're willing to entertain thoughts to 4%. Like, it's almost the wording of it. But, you know, I, I guess you understand. I, I won't go any further.
I know, you're very, very detail oriented when it comes to words. Director Justice.
Thank you. I guess I'm struggling to see the substantial difference between the two motions. So you can help me with that if you can. I'm, both I think are aspirational. Both involve staff coming to us with options to achieve a maximum 2.5% requisition increase. And in some respects, I guess the other part of it is really, in both cases, the real, you know, the, the real choice comes when we're actually given those service cut possibilities and we decide to or not. So in some ways, I don't see the difference between them. And I actually prefer the, the more straightforward and clear resolution of a 2.5% maximum increase. Unless I'm missing something.
I can, so the recommendation that came out of committee does not specify 2.5% of requisition. So the interpretation is that it's 2.5% of the entire budget. So bringing in that important word.
Okay.
Brought into today's motion.
That's important. Let me just say then that I would prefer a straightforward 2.5% requisition increase.
Okay. Ms. Bowen, you wanna add something?
Yeah, through the chair, to Director Justice. Then that puts us below what the current contract rates are for QP and, and stuff like that. So then that's already putting everybody's budget at a deficit that they'd have to provide cuts right from the very get-go. And without knowing what cuts you want to see, it's hard for staff to build a budget already cutting from the beginning. If they build it the four and then provide where you, they could bring it down with the cuts and the decisions can be made on what the levels of service or the, like, of the cuts to the budget that we want to see.
Thank you. I have no one else on the speakers list. So I just want to note that, yeah, I'm very much in favor of this compromise and that just I need to know the options for these reductions before I can pass, support a mandate that I know involves cuts. Cuts to service levels, I think, are a political decision that we have to bear and isn't fair to put on staff without clear direction of what area we want to cut. So I really look forward to getting more information to be able to make that kind of decision in the fall. So with that, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? Yeah, McGonigal, McClinton, Calio, Wilson, Morrison, Abbott, Deck, Nicholson, Duncan, alternate staples.
Can you do that again for me slowly?
From? So the whole thing? Oh, okay. McGonigal. McClinton.
McClinton.
Calio.
Calio.
Wilson.
Wilson.
Morrison.
Morrison.
Abbott.
Abbott.
Deck.
Deck.
Nicholson.
Nicholson.
Duncan, AKA Staples. Douglas. And Beeston. And Segal. Oh, Acton, sorry. Yeah, there you are. You're four. We're still on four.
We never do four, so you're confusing me.
Well, all in favor. And opposed? Manhas. Justice. Martman. Motion carries. I'm gonna go to Director Douglas. From, from the committee report, R1 is important for us to consider. Push your button.
Yeah, of course. So R1, too?
R1, yeah. R1 from, that's the, do you want me to just read it?
No, but are we gonna vote, is the intention that we would consider the first part of the recommendation?
The number one.
Or is it redundant?
R1, one, sorry. We have to, we have to consider the.
Sorry, sorry, of course, yeah, R1, one.
Calendar, yeah.
Use R1, too, yeah. So your committee of the whole reports and recommends the board meeting of July 9th, 2025, that the board budget process and calendars as presented to the committee of the whole on June 25th, 2025 be approved. So I'll move that?
Moved by Director Douglas, seconded by Director Duncan. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And I'm just gonna turn to our corporate officer who has a learning opportunity for us here.
Thank you for, Chair, for indulging me. And I didn't want to interrupt because I don't, I think it was a moot point. Because I didn't, the motion to, to call the previous question requires a secondar. I didn't see a secondar. And it does require two thirds. I think it's a moot point, but this is a good, a good lesson learned in terms of calling the question. It does require a secondar. It is not debatable and it requires two thirds of a vote.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I got thrown by the excitement of something new that I didn't look for a secondar. Okay, moving on to CR2, report and recommendations from the special committee of the whole meeting of June 25th. Director Douglas.
Your committee of the whole recommends that the economic development, couch and service review preliminary findings be referred to the member municipalities to present to their councils for information and input. So I'll move that?
Moved by Director Douglas, seconded by Director Manhas. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? One opposed, Morrison opposed. And online, Beeston, were you opposed? No, just a delay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Director Douglas. Moving on to report and recommendations of the special electoral area services committee meeting of July 2nd. Director Morrison.
Thank you, Chair. The, from your special electoral area services committee, we report and recommend as follows that the CVRD bylaw 4373, Couch Valley Regional District Official Community Plan for Electoral Areas 2024 be amended to include the changes as outlined in the staff report of June 20, 2025 to the Electoral Area Services Committee, including corrections to clear errors and Advisory Planning Commission recommended changes and that director's input be considered at a future meeting. Move that item.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Wilson. EA directors only. I'll call the question, sorry, any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Director Morrison opposed. Motion carries. Then we go to CR4, report and recommendations of Electoral Area Services Committee meeting of July the 2nd. Director Morrison.
Yeah, I think all of these are for all directors that I will read out, including if I were to listen to Mr. Robbins, the R7 that's in the EA section only. So. The, yeah, so the first block, which I'll just, I won't read them out, but there's C1, C2, C3, C4, R10, NB1, NB2, and R7. And I would move those items unless somebody wants something pulled.
Moved by Director Morrison. Is that a secondar, Director Wilson, or?
No, if I'm looking at the correct R7, I'd like to seek some clarification on that, please.
Well, why don't we do it separately then? We'll do everything but R7 and do that after the fact. So I move all those other ones that I mentioned without R7.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Abbott. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move R7.
Sorry, my AI started listening. Director Morrison, so sorry, you moved R7?
Yep.
Seconded by Director Abbott. Director Wilson, you're still on. Don't touch it.
Okay, yeah. It says on R7 that a fundraising contribution agreement be drafted between the CVRD and the Farmers Institute. I'm not too sure what that means, drafted. Does that mean that we will draft something which will then come back to the board for approval and which will result in yet more delays in an RFP going out?
Push your button. Come on. Oh, we have too many. Who, Mr. Director Morrison, I have to turn you off. There we go. Mr. Mooney.
Thanks, Chair, through, through the director. I think the intent is that a request of the board to approve the entering into an agreement, a fundraising agreement. So the expectation would be that we would not bring that agreement back if, if, if the board supported the, the resolution.
Okay, so that you would draft it, it would go out without any further ado to the Farmers Institute?
Through the chair, correct, yes.
And will that then result in any more delays in the RFP? Is the RFP ready to go out yet?
Yes, 100%. It wouldn't, it would not result in any delays.
And the RFP is where?
It's scheduled to be released this week.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Director Morrison, back to you.
For electoral area directors only, we've got a selection for you today of R1, R2, R3, R4, R5, R6, R8, and R9. Does anybody want any of those pulled for individual debate?
Director Nicholson? You'd like to pull R6?
So all of those items excluding R6, which we will debate individually, I move them.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director McClinton. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Director Morrison.
I would move R6.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director McClinton. Discussion. Director Nicholson.
I will be voting against this because I do not agree with number three, that the applicant only provide funding towards a fire service review for their area that they're developing. This is a new substantial development in the Poldi area and it's gonna have significant impacts on the Satlon Fire Service area. And I would think that if you want to develop, that you should bear the cost of the majority of the fire service review.
Any other discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Director Nicholson, Acton, Deck, opposed. Motion carries. That concludes your report, right?
That concludes my report.
Okay, we made it through the committee reports. Moving on to staff reports. Report from the Facilities and Transit Division. I'm blanking on your last name. Rondo, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Rochelle Rondo. Yes, thank you. This is an item staff brings forward every year, seeking board approval. This report presents and requests approval for the annual operating agreement for year 2025 to '26 between BC Transit and the CVRD. This agreement outlines service terms and the BC Transit budget for the Couch and Valley Regional Transit System for a one-year term. The staff report presents details on the service changes included in the annual operating agreement and any budget implications. These are consistent with CVRD's formerly approved service initiatives and the current 2025 budget. It's not uncommon that this agreement is brought forth after the agreement's start date. As staff require information from BC Transit that is generally not available until sort of early March. The province operates on a fiscal, fiscal year, whereas CVRD works on the calendar year. The agreement applies to the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2025, and staff are recommending approval of the AOA. In attendance today is Seth Wright, BC Transit Senior Local Government Relations Manager. And he or I can answer any questions. Thank you.
I'll look to the board. Are there any questions for staff? Recommendation has been moved by Director McGonigal. Do I have a secondar? Seconded by Director Calio. Any discussion? Director Abbott.
We can't go a day without reading or listening to what's not happening in the Couch and Valley for a record number of days. Is there any concession? Will, will the organization get any relief for not having service for five months? Or is that for a discussion at a later part of the day?
Push your microphone. We have a point of order.
The CVRD has no input as far as that strike is concerned. That's purely between the, the private owners and the, and the unions. We have no jurisdiction there.
Between the operator and BC Transit.
My question was about financial relief. That's not, that's not allowed to be asked?
Mr. Elzinga stepping in.
Thank you, Chair. And through the director, we think it's more appropriate for that question later in the day.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Nobody else on the speakers list? I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rondo. SR2, report from Community Planning Division. Ms. Wright, are you coming up?
Hello, I'm just here on behalf of Mike Tippett, so if there's any questions?
Hello, I'm just here on behalf of Mike Tippett, so if there's any questions.
Oh, sorry. Any questions? This is for information, I believe. Mr. Robbins, are these bylaws on this agenda? Yeah. Looks like no questions. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Uh, moving on to public hearings. So we have some public hearing minutes. I'll be looking for a mover that the public hearing minutes of June 19th, 2025, Official Community Plan Amendment, CVRD Bylaw 4636, Official Community Plan for Electoral Areas Bylaw, Stone Ridge PID is 025-942-310-000278131, 009488286, 010208089, 004173287, and 009497803. 2025 be received. Do you have a question, Director Morrison? Or are you moving?
Chair, I was, I was going to move them, but I just wanted to see if a couple of typos that I caught had been corrected and republished. And I think staff said they were going to, and it was just the misspelling of Shawnigan. So, uh, yes.
I'm, I'm getting that staff are aware, and they just haven't had time.
Okay, fair enough. So I would move the, move acceptance of the, uh, public hearing minutes.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Calio. Any discussion? I don't think we're allowed to even take discussion at this time. Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Robbins, after reading that resolution, I'm gonna leave the bylaws to you.
Thank you, Chair. because we got microphones, oh, thank you. Uh, I'll take you through that. I'm gonna do an abridged version. Uh, I understand also that EA Directors were recipients of an email clarifying what all these bylaws were, were about. And so that we can hopefully go through these, um, with the greatest of ease. And so I'm just gonna cite the bylaw number and the year and assume that, um, you understand which one I'm gonna go, so that I don't have to read them all out. I'm taking the easy road out. So BEA1, uh, that's CVRD Bylaw Number 463, 4636, 2025 be granted third reading.
Moved by Director Wilson, seconded by Director Nicholson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, that BEA2, that's CVRD Bylaw Number 4653, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Wilson, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA3, uh, Bylaw Number 4654, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Nicholson, seconded by Director Morrison. Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's CVRD Bylaw, Bylaw Number 4655, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Abbott, seconded by Director Morrison. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA5, CVRD Bylaw Number 4656, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Abbott, seconded by Director Morrison. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA6, CVRD Bylaw Number 4657, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Nicholson, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA7, CVRD Bylaw Number 4658, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA8, CVD, CV, CVRD Bylaw Number 4659, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director McClinton, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA9, CVRD Bylaw Number 4660, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Martman. Or you have a question on it? Are you also moving it? Not yet. Does anybody else would like to move this one? Director Wilson, seconded by Director Morrison. Any discussion? Director Martman.
Thank you. And through to staff, I notice in here they, um, indicate for detached dwelling on a agricultural land over 40 hectares to be limited less than what the ALR allows. I wonder if we can speak to that? Because I thought ALR land would stay within the same rules.
Ms. Wright?
So I am here on behalf of Mike Tippett, and I can't quite off the top of my head, without my computer, remember what the ALC permits. I know it's either 90 or 95.
It's for under four, uh, sorry, Chair, under 40, it is 90 meters squared for under 40, um, which it does state here, but it goes to 95 on, on acreages larger than 40 hectares, which is less.
186.
Yes, that's right.
I apologize. I can't answer to the reasoning behind it. Um, why the, why there's a discrepancy between the ALC, um, regulations and the CVRD bylaw that's been before you.
I'd like to refer this back to staff.
Okay, seconded by, was that Director Morrison? Did I see a secondar? Uh, any discussion on the referral? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? So BEA9 is referred back to staff for clarification of that. Great. Mr. Robbins?
Uh, BEA10, CVRD Bylaw Number 4661, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Nicholson, seconded by Director McClinton. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA11, CVRD Bylaw Number 4662, 2025 be granted first and sec, first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Abbott, seconded by Director Morrison. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA12, CVRD Bylaw Number 4663, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA13, CVRD Bylaw Number 4664, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Abbott, seconded by Director Deck. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA14, CVRD Bylaw Number 4665, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Abbott, seconded by Director Morrison. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA15, CVRD Bylaw Number 4666, 2025 be granted first and, first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Deck, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BA, BEA116 or 16, CVRD Bylaw Number 4667, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA17, CVRD Bylaw Number 4668, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
BEA18, CVRD Bylaw, Bylaw Number 4669, 2025 be granted first, second, and third reading.
So I'm gonna go right to, uh, Director Mart, Martman?
Maybe a, um, a humble pie. I got my bylaws mixed up. This is the one I want referred. Not the previous one.
Okay.
My mistake. I don't know how you unwind that, but you can refer both and.
So let's refer this one, and then we can go to our parliamentarian. So you'd like to refer BEA18 back to staff?
That's the one refers to the hectares.
Uh, is there a secondar? Seconded by Director Morrison. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So BE18 is referred. Mr. Robbins, do we just leave BEA9 as it is? Or do we reconsider?
Technically, you reconsider.
We can reconsider. Great, okay.
So a motion to reconsider?
I would make that motion as the.
Moved by Director Martman, seconded by Director Abbott. So we have to vote on reconsidering?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
The referral, yes. If you do not want to refer BEA9.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So we've decided to reconsider it. Mr. Robbins?
Sorry, I've just, we're reconsidering actually the referral motion as a, um.
Oh, boy.
As opposed to giving it reading. Um, yeah, so we reconsider it. Now you vote on the referral again, and you, assuming the intention is to defeat that motion to refer.
Right. So if we don't wanna refer it, we vote against this. Correct?
Correct. So the referral motion is live on the table.
So moved.
Do we have a mover and second to reconsider?
We're gonna deny it.
Thought we just did that.
Process piece.
So the first part is a motion to reconsider the motion.
R9.
Under BEA9.
Yeah.
Right, so we reconsidered that, correct? So are we not just?
And so now you are?
Entering the motion that was published.
Yeah.
No, you're reconsidering the motion that was passed, which was to refer it to staff. So you would, the intention on the, on reconsidering that would be to defeat it if you want to actually give readings to the bylaw as presented.
I assumed you were rescinding, not reconsidering, but.
I think we have to vote again on the referral motion. Correct, Mr. Robbins?
Defeat that motion, yes, by reconsidering it.
Defeat the referral motion. So all those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion to refer is defeated.
So we defeat the referral motion.
And now you can, uh,
Let's defeat it.
Move the recommendation, which is CVRD Bylaw Number 4660, 2025 be granted for a second and third reading.
So it's moved by Director Martman, seconded by Director Abbott. Any discussion? No? Call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that was a great exercise.
Thank you. So an educational day here. Mr. Robbins?
And finally, BEA19, CVRD Bylaw Number 4670, 2025 be granted for a second and third reading.
Moved by Director Deck, seconded by Director Abbott. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, we move to question period? No one's in the gallery? Question? Nope. Anyone online? Nope, okay. So read us our motion for the closed session, please.
A motion that the meeting be closed to the public in accordance with the community charter,[1779.86]